Mark.
Here.
Dally.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 21st, 2023. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $278,534.07 and payroll expenses of $241,302.17. And item C, approval of ASAP Energy Inc. expenses of $93,515.33.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. I don't believe we have a planning commission report. Is that correct? Mr. Bowman, do you have a hospital authority?
The paperwork with the attorney for the sale of the nursing home was held up. We're hoping to get it done by 10:01. There will be a special meeting coming up to see that that happens. The orthopedic program is moving well, and that's about it.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Bowman?
Somebody asked me, they said that the hospital had not paid their rent on professional building. Do you know anything about that, or is it behind, or what does the council mean that is?
I don't know. That would go to the city manager. I would think that.
Last I heard, they were behind.
They are.
They are. I don't know the exact amount.
Okay.
You also wait to sign another lease of them as well for one of the other rooms.
I have a question on that. And the hospital I know is managed by the sheriff. Is that, is the nursing home, is that owned by the city? How does that work? Just, how does, whenever something like that's sold, I mean...
That's under the authority of the hospital board. The way that's set up is through a trust, giving the board complete authority over that, so it's not going through the city. The city is the beneficiary of the trust. If there was anything, if it was going to cease to exist, everything would go back to the city. But as far as selling anything, that's the authority of the hospital.
Do you have questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you. Next item is the library board meeting. Mr. Dally?
I was unfortunately unable to do it here.
Mr. Ford, do you have anything to share?
I think the highlight of that was they re-elected Ms. Harkin for another term as the chairman. That's kind of the highlight of the meeting. Sandra presented the annual report, which is attached to this agenda as well. Somebody can see that as well. That's the main two highlights of the meeting.
Any questions from the council? All right. Item D is the Alva Arena Authority meeting. I don't believe we have anything to report there. Item E is the Tourism Tax Commission meeting. Mrs. Bear?
We did not have one last month. We will have one on Wednesday at 5:30. I will not be in attendance, since I will be at OML, but I will get notes.
Alva Board of Adjustments meeting. I don't believe we had one of those. As far as the Airport Commission goes, we did approve renewing our CDs at the best rate that we can get for six months or 12 months, depending on what that's going to be. What else we could see? I feel like there was something else. We got a report. You're going to talk about the lighting project. That's basically it. Any questions regarding the airport meeting? All right. Item H is the Alva Recreation Complex Board Meeting. It should be Alva Parks and Recreation Board Meeting. Mrs. Swallow?
We had just a routine meeting on the 13th, and then on the 15th, the turf bids were opened, and they are being sent to Kenley Horn for consideration.
Any questions from the council for Mrs. Swallow?
I've had several citizens reach out. You know, I like the idea of the turf. I think it's great. I know a lot of it's coming from donations, but their concern was after the effective life of the turf, what's the plan to pay for it at that point? Is there any sort, has that been discussed?
There's been a lot of discussion on so many specific issues. I couldn't tell you specifically about that one, but I know that it has come out at times. It didn't with this last one.
I did have somebody bring up that bats have a ten-year lifespan normally.
So one of the things they did in these bids is we've ordered an extra set of batter's boxes for every field and a few other places that are high-wear to try to extend the life of, basically, I don't know where the base has, basically, many of the batter's boxes and maybe the pitching area for softball. Things that are high-wear, we ordered extras in the bin packet to make sure we extend the life of the turf a little longer.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Next item is the cemetery meeting. Mr. Ford, can you give that report?
I can. We're going to have a whole lot come out of this meeting. We're still working on the green barrel plans and procedures. Still going to get with Mr. Cunningham to make sure we got the final approval from the legal counsel. They'll go forward with that to their next meeting to get their approval to bring it to the city council. That was a big topic for the cemetery board, is the green barrels.
Any questions regarding the cemetery meeting? Next item is Finance Committee meeting, September 18th. Mr. Winters?
Overall, the financial position in the city continues to seem to improve. We are about 3% short of collecting our budgeted revenue for the year. There's a couple of things kind of pulling down on that, one being that we've only collected 2.29% of Alva Economic Development Fund. I reported on this last month, but again, that number is drawn down because we have budgeted for grants and donations that haven't been received. So the Alva Utility Authority has collected 23% of its expected revenues. That's boosted up by a million-dollar grant that we received. Our total cash balances have increased, about one and a half million. The vast majority of that is, again, that million-dollar grant now to Utility Authority, as well as we cashed in $500,000 worth of CDs. Those CDs, I believe, are the ones that are going to be used for this turf project. We put it away to draw some interest on it. And then now that we're getting to the point where we need that to be a little more liquid, we went out, we had discussed at the last meeting about a high-interest savings account. We have now actually gotten that account open, but we've opened it with Alva State Bank here locally as opposed to what was originally brought to us. The other thing to note is we have not, at this point, had to make a transfer from the Utility Authority to the General Fund, which is fantastic relative to where we normally are at this point in the year. And I believe that covers all of the highlights.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Winters?
Any idea why the Economic Development Authority fund is down? You said it was down by three. Was it collected?
It's collected revenues, or 3% of expected revenues. That's because of the expected grants and donations in there that haven't been received. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Winters? As far as the mayor's report, I did this morning present a proclamation along with the Daughters of the American Revolution for Constitution Week, and we did that at Lincoln School with all the fourth and fifth graders there. Other than that, we'll be having a few council members and business manager attending municipal conferences this week in Oklahoma City. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any for the council. Next item is the city business manager's report. Mr. Ford?
Okay. We'll open it up with the bad news. So our Waste Connections bill, they're going to go up 3.67% effective of 1 September. We'll see that in October. This is the place where we take all the waste of the transfer site over to Minno. So that went up. Didn't go up as much as our CPI, but it did go up. I don't see any of that being passed on to the citizens anytime soon. The good news, seven things. Assistant Police Chief Holly was chosen as the vice chairman of Cleet Drug Dog Advisory Council for the state. So that's kind of a good recognition for Alva. The airport lights were supposed to work today, or began to work today, but it was too wet, so it looks like they're going to start Wednesday or Thursday to get that project going. The new water meter install crew arrived today. They're taking about this week to get a survey of the land and kind of figure out what their plan of action is going to be. But I think it looks like they're planning on about 20 meters per installer per day. So around four small meter installers and two large meter installers in town until it's done. So it looks like they're going to get hot and heavy on it real soon, which would be good. As Mayor mentioned, OEM up against tomorrow runs through Friday. It should be interesting, to say the least. As Mrs. Swallow mentioned, we did get the bids open Friday for those turf fields. We had one that came in under budget. Kenley Horn does have them now, and they are evaluating them. Just put on the calendar, we're planning on having a Parks and Rec Special Meeting on 26 September at noon, and I'll be followed by a Special Meeting of the City Council and ADA at 5:30 on the 26th to approve those recommended bids for the turf, so we can get that project moving. The big cruise car show was last weekend, and from everything I'm hearing, it was a great success. Heard some folks had talked to the vendors, they're happy they made a lot more than they did in years in the past, so now you get to call Joe Phillips and find out all the tax numbers for the vendors, and call OTC and make sure they submit their sales tax for Alva, which will be fun. For everyone that signed up to be on the LPAC, we're going to have a meeting tentatively on October 2nd. We've got Ms. Thomas from the OEDA coming out here to help us get our five-year CIP moving in the right direction. So probably about 5:30 in the afternoon on the 2nd. Last but not least, Locust Street bids, when our bid tickets went out, we'll be opening the sealed bids on 5 October. What is our time of that bill?
It's 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, right here in the city council chamber. So Locust Street is finally moving. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Mr. Ford?
The new meters that have been installed, how are they performing? Because it should be about a month now.
We're not going to take the readings off of them, are we? The new ones? Yet?
Yeah, but we don't do that until next one.
Okay. There's only a few of them, so it'll be a small sampling. I think we'll have a much better sampling size next month once these installers have had a chance to go to town.
The old meters, is there going to be any value on those? Are we going to be able to sell those?
Roughly $8,000 to $10,000. Once we get them all pulled off, I'll put them on the agenda for so far.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford? All right. Thank you. Item number seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody from the public would care to, that we will give you an opportunity to address the council. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and we would ask that any speaker please identify himself or herself. If they'd care to make a public comment. Item number eight is a presentation from Waterworth Utility Modeling and Analytics. The Water Committee members have had a presentation regarding this information. Mr. Ford and Ms. Matheson have worked to prepare, I guess, a quicker overview of what the Waterworth program is. But essentially, it's a program that is going to enable the business manager to put together realistic projections on the long-term costs and replacement strategies that are necessary for our water infrastructure. So Steve, I want to turn it over to you and Emily.
Hey, Emily, are you there?
Hi, how are you?
Okay, great. Turn it over to you, Emily.
Excellent. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. My name's Emily Matheson. I'm with Waterworth. I am here to provide a presentation on our services. We offer our really unique service that helps communities achieve more financially sustainable public services and utilities. So we've been having some really great conversations with Mr. Ford and the team, and I'd like to provide a brief update to you all so that you can have a better understanding of Waterworth. Pardon me, Waterworth is. Show my screen, and we will go through that. That came up for you? Should just be white?
Yeah, it did.
Okay. Excellent, excellent. So first, I'm going to take you through a 30,000-foot view of our organization to provide some context, and then we'll dive into how this more specifically relates to the city of Alva. So when it comes to long-term financial planning for utilities and other public services, there's traditionally two ways that communities approach this. So on the one hand, some communities will manage this work in-house, they'll load up financial models and rate models in Excel. What we offer is similar to that in the sense you can have full control over your analysis, but without the headache and the time spent managing spreadsheets. On the other hand, some communities will turn to a third party. You're probably familiar with a rate consultant, and that's typically the case if staff would like a little bit of extra support with analysis or just support presenting those recommendations for it and explaining the reasons behind them. We have a background as rate consultants. That was our business model for about 15 years before we pivoted to what it is today. So similarly, we can provide that support and advising. But what Waterworth offers in addition to these two approaches, really critical gap that we aim to bridge is to empower better communication and collaboration, both within different departments, within staff, but then also between staff and yourselves elected officials, making sure that we're bringing data-driven recommendations forward. So we do that through a cloud-based platform, and the key differentiator is our continuous process. So this is something that uses continuously up-to-date data to ensure that you are receiving recommendations, making decisions based off of current conditions and not historic snapshot in the past. So looking into specifically some of the reasons why we began speaking with the city of Alva. The first business issue that we identified here, really the headline, is that it's difficult to generate sufficient funding for utilities. This is a common case with communities, especially of your size, that are really large-scale systems to operate and manage across the smoker or ratepayers. And so based off of this critical business issue, we drilled down into what the causes could be for this, and Waterworth helps address each one of these specific causes. So we'll go through these one by one. So first off, one of the root causes for this business issue is that utilities and other capital projects have to compete for the same pool of funding. Like it's a small ratepayer basis for these costs for many different services. Secondly, when there's a lack of clarity on infrastructure condition and what the costs are to maintain or replace that infrastructure, this can impact stakeholders' confidence in supporting rate increases. And then the third root cause that goes along with this is that it's difficult to generate revenue requirements while protecting affordability. So these are the three main causes that we aim to address and Waterworth is able to address for the city of Alva. We have a few different financial models and rate models that we use to do that. So first off, we have a long-term financial model, and this is where we can understand really clearly what the revenue requirements are today and into the future, and what are the different assumptions that are causing those costs to increase. And then from here, we can look at scenarios to help recover those revenue requirements. We can also understand better what our costs are for renewal and replacement of our aging infrastructure, and then we can dive into more granular rate design where we can find really creative ways to do things, protect values, such as affordability or equity. So just bringing this all together, what Waterworth offers is one-part software tool. So this is where we're pulling in your data and helping to build that up to tell an actual story. So we're running analysis together in collaboration and getting you to the decisions you need. But in addition to the software, we also have our professional support and advising team, and that kind of breaks up into two parts. So first, we can provide really effective advisory, so we can guide you to be saying which scenarios would make sense for us to explore. We can also help make presentations such as this, or support any kind of workshops. And then also behind the scenes, we have model managers, and the key here is to take any low-level data management where off the plates of your team, and we'll take care of it on our end so that city staff can just come in for the higher-level analysis. So altogether, those are the three parts of the city experience. And this is something that we work with over 150 communities on across the US. It's certainly been proven, especially with communities of your size, we're all in this really unique position of balancing the difficulty between maintaining the infrastructure while protecting affordability for your ratepayers. I'll turn it over for any questions.
Any other questions?
How would they know what we have?
We give our data. Should we work with Heather and give her our data?
So between what we know about our infrastructure age, that Myers Engineering can help us with and things of that nature, what we know about our infrastructure age and our operating expenses for our utility authority, we would provide that information to them, and they would then, using their system, analyze all of that and put it together into meaningful information that we can use to make decisions. They're not a company that's going to be able to help us shop for deals or help us get loans or anything like that. Really, their task on behalf of the city of Alva is to have a clear picture of what our infrastructure is and using their models, project what our infrastructure is going to cost us over time. And if we have the information that we can determine what our costs are over time, then we can make decisions to help meet the needs that are going to be present in the future. We haven't done anything like this as a city of Alva, and I'm not going to say ever, not in the last eight years, and probably not prior to that for several as well. We go off of, basically, whichever needs come up greatest in the moment, and those are the needs that we try to address, probably too late in most cases. So this would allow us to have a reasonable expectation of what we're going to need to spend on our utility system, infrastructure, long after we're gone from these chairs at this desk.
What's their fee, and is this a one-time analysis?
No, it's continual analysis. And they have a variety of models we can use to kind of get different viewpoints on, if this, then that. So it's kind of, you kind of keep playing with the model a bit to kind of see where it goes. It's an annual fee, it's a subscription for their service.
Do we know how much that is?
It's like roughly, was it $9,000, Emily?
The annual subscription.
And is that for any of their models, or is that just like their base model?
So the rate surcharge is based off the number of funds we do. So one fund is $9,000, add another fund, it's a few more thousand, add another fund, it's a few more thousand. So I want to start with just the AUA fund to start off and see what kind of benefit we get from that. If we get some benefit from that, the navigation will go up to the General Fund or the ADA or any other fund that may be streets and alleys or something like that, I don't know. Some will project that long-term infrastructure need. So I would see what we do with AUA first with utilities, and then we'll go from there.
When we say get them their, get them the information or our data, will you kind of unpack that? What do we mean? Like, is it just, are we sending it off in like a CSV or some sort of automatic?
I'm not sure how they're going to answer. I think it's probably just a CSV, but it's going to be based on a lot of our utilities data that Heather collects and has in ENCODE.
It's something we can automatically generate. We don't have to have somebody handle it.
It's all automated. So it must be machine-made, machine-made, we just hand the stuff off to them. Is that right, Emily?
Yeah. And to get started, primarily, that information will be found in your financial statements and your budget and your capital plans. Very easy to access information. From there, we can pull out billing data to get a bit more granular with our rate analysis, but we start with the easiest to access information assert. You just put that in a CSV or an Excel file, send that over our way. We're not too picky about the format. That's something our model managers will handle on our end, and we'll get that into the tool for you, and then we'll reach out and say it's all good to go and meet with you to review.
Just to clarify that, how many different elements in that data do you think there'll be? Like, are you saying there'll be 100, you mean 1,000, 10,000 different unique elements that you're going to process and pull information from? I just didn't know the size of it.
Yeah, it depends on which model, but let's say the long-term financial model, which is the first piece when we started working together. So for that, we're mostly just looking for the main categories from your financial statements from a couple of previous fiscal years. Your operating expenses, for example, revenues, any debt that was serviced, what the opening cash balance is, and I could maybe even pull some of that stuff off the website right now to pull that in. The larger data sets are typically the billing data sets. So the scale of those data sets depends on your billing frequency. So let's say if you were to bill quarterly, then for each customer, there would be four line items for each one of their bills. But the size of the data set doesn't really matter to us. We have 50 connection clients and 750,000 connection clients, any of that works. It's just an export from your end, and then you just send it over to our team, and then we'll get it into the tool.
Do you guys assist us with gathering that information, or is it up to us to give you the file?
Yeah, we certainly want to. I know that that can be a pain sometimes, so certainly we'll assist you with that. For example, if it's easiest to connect us directly with your billing provider, we can work with them one-on-one to get exactly the information we need, or you're welcome to connect us directly with your engineers, same thing.
Anything else? All right. Thanks, Emily. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. Next item, discussion and action to approve Tyler Technologies' expense of $37,269.86 for ENCODE 9 Cloud software. ENCODE is our accounting system that we use. We had discussed during our budgeting process about upgrading to ENCODE 10. Upon further research, staff has determined, and I'll let you guys speak more into details, but they've determined that sticking with ENCODE 9 is what we need to do and going to the cloud-based application. And so Steve?
After talking to ENCODE, they told us basically if we go to ENCODE 9 Cloud, then eventually everything ENCODE 10 was going to do will already be present in ENCODE 9 Cloud. So we're going to get the benefits of ENCODE 10, but we can move everything to the cloud and quit backing the thing up on hard servers and all that kind of stuff that can fail relatively easily. So that's the attractive for this. But basically, we're going to get ENCODE 10. Now, I think it will be cheaper. I'm not exactly sure if they can tell you the cost, but I don't remember.
But right now, this is just nulling with the cloud.
Right.
What's the, you know, you say eventually, what's the timeframe to have the features of 10? Because I know there were several that were kind of big that we really kind of wanted.
What'd they say, like six to eight months? That wasn't very long. And we do have some of the features that you're talking about.
Okay. And that $37,269.86 is an annual expense?
Right. So it's added on top of the, so the $46,000 that's there, 4680214, was for the ENCODE 9 base version. We add the cloud version on top of it, it's an additional $37,000, and that will be an annual fee.
So we're going to be paying like $70,000 a year?
So what is the cost for us to store it on the hard drives or whatever we're doing now? I mean, is it a huge increase to what we're paying for the... now? I mean, is it a huge increase to what we're paying for the, to us not have the cloud, or?
We spend, and I can't speak specifically to the server maintenance, but with our IT contract that we presently have, we're spending roughly $125,000 a year, which part of that is, only part of that is server maintenance. But servers, physical servers, some of you guys that work in IT can answer this more knowledgeably, but physical servers are usually number one, expensive, and don't have a very long lifespan, and they...
My concern is they're not $37,000 a year expensive. So that's an expensive server. And so what really needs to be, in my opinion, quantified there, is more of the software benefit, because only, I would reasonably say only about probably $6,000 to $8,000 a year could reasonably, and I mean, that's being conservative, reasonably be said that you're saving in terms of hardware and maintenance costs.
No, that's not the only thing that makes this a benefit. I mean, the features that are going to come with this, number one, right now, if we were to have an IT issue go, it happened with City of Alba, our ENCODE would be included in that. And so if something happens and we don't have our IT infrastructure, ENCODE is down, we can't send out bills, we can't collect payments, we can't do all of these things. So the ability to have that in the cloud, if Heather were to end up in the hospital for six months, we don't have anybody that can step in and do that. We move this to the cloud, Tyler Technologies can come in and run our system for us to get us by until we have somebody up to speed that can do it in-house.
So you're also building in redundancy?
Yes, we're building in redundancy, and we're getting some features that are going to make it easier for us to do our budgeting process. We did a ton of manual processes with Excel spreadsheets in order to prepare the budget this past year, and I dare say it's been that way every year. I just got to experience it firsthand. And so, probably, gosh, I bet it would cut the time in half, staff time in half, in terms of budget preparation to get ready for next year's budget and have things.
A little streamlined form?
And when council comes in and says, hey, can you do this? Tell us what the budget looks like if you do this. Well, right now, to tell you what the budget looks like if we do this, it's making sure we don't make any human errors in 15 different spreadsheet entries and stuff like that. This will have features that make the budgeting process go a lot smoother. None of us have used those features, so I mean, we are, you know...
It's all assumption, no?
Yeah.
So what is the difference between the Cloud 9 and the 10? Do we have any idea of the cost?
I have to go back and look it up, I can't remember. I think they're relatively similar, but I have to go back and look to it.
And I'm assuming the Cloud 10 you're referring to would be the on-prem solution?
Or just the 10? 10 would not be cloud-based.
Right, it would be on-prem.
Well, they could still have some of those options you're talking about, that we...
They would have the software features, not the CPS. And I'm an adventurer, I'm going to say, I probably know the answer to this, but I'm assuming our ENCODE software's currently running on a single server located here? That there's no second server, there's not?
Well, SBI backs it up supposedly, basically.
Okay.
But Tyler Technologies doesn't have access to the backup.
And with this comes backup from Tyler, so the backup does directly to Tyler.
Does it have the ability, like an offline redundancy built into the cloud, or do you have to maintain an internet connection using?
I don't know if that's a question. I would say you have to have internet.
And we don't have any sort of redundant internet connection for the City of Alba?
No. Short view yourself of the hotspot.
So then the next question I would ask is...
I think the best answer is we're not, we don't know the answer.
So let's assume that you do require an active internet connection in the past year. How many times have you had internet outage here at City Hall?
We've never had internet.
Sort of when we have, we have had, like, for example, the electric line went down over here, and we lost power to the end of the whole square. After about 30 minutes, our UPS went down, and all of our servers went off, and everything went off, we lost. But then once you have a power outage, it wasn't necessarily...
Right, and whether you're on, you're not operating at that point. So that's a little different animal.
And so Pioneers are an internet provider. We've had very good luck with Pioneers as an ISP.
And it's a fiber line.
It is.
Dedicated fiber?
Yeah.
So what we have now works, just not as efficiently. So we're just trying to...
Was this a budgeted item?
Yes.
Are we within?
10 was budgeted. 9 Cloud was not budgeted, but 10 was budgeted, 9 Cloud wasn't. And between the departments where this budget item would be spread across, the money's there.
And we're within, we're within the budgeted amount? We're not above the budgeted amount?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't find an alert, so. I think we're close. I don't know if we're over, or I can't tell you.
Yeah, because I can't, I know we discussed, I know we discussed that, but I don't remember.
I want to say when we set the budget up, we set $90,000 to go to ENCODE 10, which included, which was not an additional amount of money, it was the...
Total cost was 90,000, and the total cost is 70, 80.
I think that's right. But I don't...
Know that for certain.
I don't know that for certain. We went to look back for the original department budget document, where the request was included in the budget. We've not been able to locate that.
That sounds familiar to me as well, so.
If there aren't any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Tyler Technologies' expense of $37,269.86 for ENCODE 9 Cloud software.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Winters, and second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Tyler Technologies' expense of $37,269.86 for ENCODE 9 Cloud software. Is there any further discussion?
So what happens if we don't vote this in? If it's a no vote, how?
We don't do ENCODE 9 by base, and so we...
Well, how does that make it difficult for who's involved?
So as far as monthly reporting and budget preparation concerned, right now, it increases what we have is a higher number of labor hours to prepare the monthly reports, as well as the annual budget reports that need to be prepared in order to give the council the information they need to both conduct routine business, as well as prepare the annual budget. So the labor hours will increase, and those labor hours are primarily with Crawford and Associates, which is a contract company, and that's at a much higher rate than what we have for labor hours within City Hall. So that's one thing. The ability to have the information, or the system redundantly backed up in the cloud, and then accessible by Tyler Technologies, gives us some added, I guess, reliability in our ability to ensure that our bills go out, and our money comes in and is accounted for in the event that there's some kind of a, whether that be we don't have this personnel in our office, or Crawford goes out of business, or whatever, the resources would be in place where Tyler Technology could come in and do that stuff for us. So we've got some redundancy there. We also have the backup availability being not onsite. So the backup is going to be in the cloud, and as long as we've got internet, we can get our backup.
So I was hesitant on making my motion, because it's a lot of money. What really got me is I would almost never recommend any organization place their critical software, they're just running their business on one server in one location, because too much can go wrong, too much can fail, and it's too consequential to business operations. And in the event that that happened, it's going to cost us well over $37,000, well over $37,000.
You have to know there is here and at SBI, though.
There is not a backup server, they're taking a backup, which potentially is a bare-metal backup, which means our RPO would be potentially 24 to 48 hours, depending on what they set their RPO at.
But how come we don't know exactly what we've got with SBI?
It's another discussion item that's relevant in this case, but we are working to prepare requests for proposals for IT service provider. And I mean, it's not a discussion we can have on this agenda, but to answer your question, we don't know the answer to your question, and we don't like not knowing the answer to your question.
But if we're going to seek bids, you know what I mean? I've seen reasonable estimations from anywhere between 24 hours to within an hour, in the time of returning any critical software that's a backup to active working condition.
This would be available in that timeframe?
The concern with just doing it as a backup and not having a live redundant server is that we probably don't have a server in the box even. And so it could be anywhere between one day and several weeks to have the hardware to even put the backup back on. In this case, we don't have that problem. So like I said, that's the selling point to me, is the possibility that we're down for a week, and they can't work, and we're paying people to sit in the office, not being able to do their job, plus we're not able to get bills out. The cost, it's an insurance. I mean, this is an insurance.
Kind of before we do this, though, I think I would like to know exactly what we've got, and how soon they can have this stuff going.
I agree. And I mean, is there options that give us the secured, higher level of confidence in our system that could be done for a reduced cost? I mean, I don't know if there is, but I think.
I mean, maybe this is the best thing, but we really don't know exactly what we've got right now.
Well, ENCODE is the premier accounting software for municipalities.
In terms of the hardware redundancy, yes, there are things that can be done that are cheaper than that. Yes. I'd be lying to you to tell you otherwise. The concern I would place in that is, is the increase in complexity, and the cost of that complexity.
I don't necessarily have your same concerns about it, though. I think there are cheaper and less complex ways of doing redundancy, and having higher availability.
I mean, I've managed it for many, many years, and I know the complexity involved in highly available and redundant machines, as should you, and it's not, it's not simple to do with a staff of zero, so.
The redundancy in the server portion of this is only part of it. It's going to create efficiencies for our staff and our contractors.
With the labor savings alone?
How much are we spending on labor exactly this month? I mean, exactly what's it going to save us on labor? I mean, figure on that.
So Steve gets paid $110,000 a year, plus some benefits, and so break that out, his hours, I mean, if we're going to, I'm going to guarantee you that for the better half of, or for the better part of February for sure, a lot of January, February, March, April, May, that's almost 100% of his time spent on budget preparation. And, you know, it was, I mean, it was 30, 40 hours a week whenever, you know, I came down to do it, and I had Leroy helping, and I had Brian Miller and Heather, and then after we hired Steve, we had Steve. A lot of man-hours were put in to try and run spreadsheets. And we're literally talking, our budget was built on spreadsheets, not out of the system.
And we even had a formulator because it was human error. This would alleviate that.
Yeah, it's going to, in Tyler Technologies' 10, it will regain some of that functionality we're looking for.
Tyler Technology 9 Cloud will do that, too.
Okay, but the 10 that's coming out will also.
I've got a motion. I've got a second, too. So we're going to have the vote. Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Lauren?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, I will clarify, we will figure out, all you've done is given him the authority to make the purchase. If the money's not there in the budget, then there'll have to be a budget amendment in order for him to do that. So, so we're all on the same page. If we didn't budget appropriately, it'll come back as a budget issue. So.
All right. Item 10, presentation of City of Alba Library Annual Report, Mr. Ford. So Sandra couldn't be here, so everybody's got to live late to this. If they're not ready, great. There's nothing, earth-shattering here, the library's on track. There's been a lot of good things. Their traffic is up, especially now that school's back in. Their programs are all going well, and they're not hurt for funding. They've got a nice $5,000 grant that they can use. So all in all, the library's doing well. This is the annual report that goes up to the state board of libraries, I guess. So if you have any questions on it, don't hesitate to send me an email or ask me, or we can get the director on the phone and find out from him. But like I said, all in all, it's a very positive report for our library.
I thought it was interesting in the article in the paper, or maybe it was what we, I don't know, for the city stuff, but it was 60 years ago that SherTrust presented the deed to the library, to the city, totaling debt-free, and it was the first project for SherTrust. I thought that was kind of interesting.
All right. Anything else on the item 10? I'm going to jump. Gentlemen, I apologize for not doing this earlier, but I'm going to jump down to item 14.
We're in over a year.
And I know you both, all of you need to get back to the city tonight, so we'll get this going. Item 14, and then after we do the city council, we're going to jump to the utility, we're going to take a recess from the city council, jump to the utility authority, and do this item in that meeting as well. So. Item 14, discussion, consideration, and take appropriate action, including but not limited to approval, denial, amendment, revision, or conditional approval in whole or in part of approving Resolution 2023-019, a resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma. The city approving action taken by the Alba Utility Authority, the authority authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of a promissory note of the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract pertaining to the water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste disposal systems, and containing other provisions related thereto. So what this is, as we discussed at the last meeting, and I know we didn't have a full council, but we have, we've had many discussions about our water infrastructure needs. This is an opportunity to secure some financing without having the debt secured by additional revenue. So basically, we've gone to our bond council, and our engineers, and asked them to prepare enough projects for us to be able to take them on without increasing our annual debt payments, but still being able to accomplish some vital infrastructure needs for the city. I think I would like to start with Bill Myers, with Myers Engineering. He's got Stephen with him.
Michael.
Michael?
Michael.
Oh, my gosh!
He told you.
I told you. Michael, thank you for being with us. I'm glad you joined Bill this evening. I'm going to call Bill by the wrong name for the night, so just to do it.
Just don't call me Jim and Mesita, we're all right.
But Bill, would you, would you care to address the council, explain the projects that are, that we're needing to address?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Of course, you know, through the years, we've tried to do what we could with what we had as far as water infrastructure, you know? It's time that we need to address a few more things. What we looked at was, what could we do with what, with the funding that the mayor was talking about, nominal five million dollars? So we were thinking that, first of all, the water storage tank in the well field, it is very, very important to us. We think it was built in the nineteen forties, maybe around forty-two, forty-three, it's built during the war, I know that much, World War Two. And the, the tower is antiquated, outdated, it needs to be replaced, okay? So that's going to be about a one point seven million dollar construction cost. We also looked at the telemetry system for the well field, the way we communicate with the well field now. It's, from what I can tell, is maybe twenty years old, fifteen to twenty years old, and it was, it's not even a complete system. We put in what, the city put in what they could, what they could afford at the time, and it, it is, it's antiquated already, so that system needs to be updated. We were going to look at putting individual radios on each well with intermediate stations at the chlorine system, at the water storage tank in the well field, and then a control tower, a control system at the, the towers at Young Boulevard and Thunderbird, and then put one on the Oklahoma Tower, and then at the public works facility. And then the staff could monitor and even make set point changes on the different pieces of equipment utilizing their cell phones or laptop computer, as the case may be. So it's time to upgrade that and bring it up into, you know, to a useful system. We also looked at replacing critical water mains in town where we're suffering as far as leaks and water loss and just, you know, staff, you know, load as far as working on the water mains. So what we looked at there, we could do about sixteen thousand feet, we believe, of water mains in the central part of the city, or the, the city part, not the transmission mains going to the well field. So we have, so that'd be around two million dollars, the telemetry would be around three hundred and fifteen thousand, and then the, the water storage tank in the well field would be about one point seven, one point seven-five million, plus you have, we had contingencies and the fees associated with the project. So all in all, about four point eight to five million dollars would be the cost, so. And the tower that we've been doing in the well field or the tank would be similar to the one at Thunderbird that we just did about five or six years ago, wouldn't be as tall. This one would only be thirty-two foot tall. So that's what, this is a, this is the first, you know, step in getting, starting to get your system together. Through the years, we've done a few water main replacements. I think everything since about nineteen eighty, probably the mid-eighties, we've been using PBC, and then, so those lines are in pretty good shape, but it's all the, the lines that were put in from nineteen seventeen up through that period that we need to deal with, and they're all over town. And there was a whole period in the nineteen fifties where they used material that was cast iron that needs to be replaced, so. Like I told somebody earlier today, Alba gets a lot of life out of their equipment and materials, they've done a great job at that, but it's time that we start, you know, dealing with the tank, the telemetry, and replace the lines that we can for now in town. This is, this is a good start for us, so.
Bill, can, can you explain to the council what those three aspects of the project mean in terms of reliability of our system to the end users? And, and then if there's any cost efficiencies to be gained from our utility department staff?
Well, on the telemetry, first of all, it'll reduce the number of trips they have to make to the well field area. And it's twenty-two miles from the center of town to the well field. So it'll reduce those, because they'll be able to see the well field, what's going on with, with each well on their phone, and they'll be able to see what's going on with the chlorine station, they'll be able to see what's going on with the water tower in the well field as well. So that right there in itself is a big savings.
And we go every day.
Yeah.
At least once. At least once.
And sometimes they go more than that. And so we might even, you might change the frequency to every other day, and if you want, if things get weird, you can do every three days, depending on what is going on. So that, and then when we look at the water tower, they've, the control system has, we've had a lot of water losses through the tower, because the control system doesn't work well with the tower. The tower has a antiquated overflow system, which we lose a lot of water there, we think the tower is leaking. So replacing that's going to save us some costs because of the water losses. The water losses in town, you all have seen, if you drive around town, are immense, so replacing the mains that we can in town is going to help our overall cost. Besides fixing them, it's just going to, just on water losses alone, so. So overall, it's an economic benefit for the city as far as your cost, and it's just something, not even, not even thinking about the interruption to customers over time. This, all these things will help mitigate interruptions, will always have sometimes, something will happen when you have an interruption, but they'll mitigate the frequency of the interruptions.
Bill, can you explain to the council why we have to have that ground water tank?
Okay, sure. So what happens is, the way the system was designed, the water wells that began are twenty-two miles south, okay, they pump to this ground storage tank, which is north of Galena, I think that's right, Galena? Which is an area down there, south of Greensburg. And so when that was just, so those, the wells were intended to look at the tower and feel the tower, then that tower gravity flows to the towers on Thunderbird, okay? So in the past, like when the city was seven thousand population back in the sixties and the fifties, we put in some intermediate pump stations to raise the pressure a little bit, because the demand was so great, the population has dropped over time. So now what happens is, we pump from the well field to the tower, the tower gravities to town through the sixteen inch water mains. So that's why we have to have it. If we had to pump directly from the well field, we would have to potentially change out every pump, we'd have to put in an elaborate booster pump station, by the time we do that, we could have built a water storage tank to do the same thing. So everything is set up, with the, with, the pumps are set up to go to the water storage tank now, if we deleted that, then they have to pump all the way to town, it'd be very difficult to operate, very difficult. Matt, your question, Kevin?
Council, have any questions, Mr. Myers?
The telemetry system, do we have an estimate of what that could save us yearly in labor and vehicle maintenance?
Eighty thousand. And that was over?
Four years, or one?
I think it was over four years.
Four years with one vehicle.
One vehicle, one vehicle, one driver, one trip a day.
And they're going weekends, too.
Yeah. So, but just straight pay, once a day, one driver, one vehicle, is eighty thousand dollars over four years, so that's, that's just with that consideration.
Does that consider that we're still going to have to go, just every third day?
We could go every third day, yes. You could, you could, I have systems that go once a week, but I mean, you have, you'll have to see how it works, so the, the operators will, you have twenty-two, minimum of twenty-two wells that operate, so we just need to see how.
And I'm, I am only speaking of, this is the, these are the trips we make when nothing's going wrong. I'm not talking about the trips we make when something's going wrong. I'm just talking about the trips we make when, when it's dallying because we have to go out there and check.
And this would be, that, that they're going out there to check information, but they wouldn't have to physically go check anymore with this one for system.
Right, for example, we have to write down some numbers off the coordination station. They could do that from their phone now instead of going down there.
Would have to drive down there to do it. So it would a hundred percent eliminate those trips.
Can this system, if there's problems, can it alert us sooner than us finding out if we didn't have, I mean?
That's the beauty of it, they'll get an alarm, they'll go, oh, oh, okay. So then they might have to go down and look, but at least they're warned before a tank is empty, you know?
So it's almost like the oil field alarms that people get, like my husband, when they have alarms that go off on their rigs when oil, something's going wrong, it'd be the similar system.
They, they know they need to get it to the shop, saying, here, we'll get an alarm.
Or panic or something.
So you talk about radio, is this, what, what type, I mean, reliability of this? Is it, what could cause a system like this to go down? Is it anything internet based, anything what?
The, okay, so, you know, it's, the site's very remote.
Yes.
We have power, but as far as anything internet, you would have to be something, you know, we'd have to use some satellite or something probably, but what we looked at is using the, the well field would be a lower power radio, we'd do a higher power radio at the chlorine facility, and then another higher powered radio at the water tower, and then a higher powered radio at the Youngs Boulevard. And that's the, the project we put together, we developed a budget. Until, I mean, cell service is just not for controls, it's just not quite there yet. At least in, if we were in Tulsa, Oklahoma City, yeah, it might.
So that radio, that system, does that have a yearly cost associated with it?
No, not for the, not for the, I don't know of any cost with the infrastructure. I don't think it does, that's the beauty of the radio, because we don't have the monthly fee like here with cellular or something like that, you would have a monthly fee, or if you were telephone, monthly fee, that's the beauty of the radio, so.
So when we're talking about the lines in town, we would be able to move them out from under our roads, stop tearing up our roads every time we had a leak or what, because we're fixing our lines, leaks should become far and few between realistically, hopefully. Fix our roads finally after we move our lines where they should be, not underneath our roads, and then have a well field that is not going to go down because of age.
But we'll know if it's something's going on.
Yes, if something is going on.
And this is approximately five million dollars now? What, the total estimates, I've heard any, around eighty million is to, to get everything that needs, needs to be done, I mean, what, I mean, just so our citizens.
Probably closer to a hundred.
Just, I mean, I know the citizens read, hey, the City of Alba spent five million dollars on water projects, they're thinking, hey, we're getting a ton of new, this is really a small percent of what all needs to be done, is that, would you agree with that?
That's correct. The, like on the water main replacement that we're talking about, say nominal sixteen thousand feet, I think it's around ten to twelve percent of the water mains in town. Now, some of those we've, through the years, we've put in in PBC originally, so, you know, it could even be fifteen percent that we would, that would be upgraded, let me rephrase that. Ten percent might be PBC now, so if we're going back to PBC, so we might have twenty percent upgraded with this, with what exists. So we still, that number of a hundred million, including the transmission main, is probably not far off. I mean, the transmission main is, it's a, it's a very, it's a dramatic cost, but, you know, what we're doing now, the project we just replaced, I think seven thousand feet of the transmission main, we're going to get ready to tie it in in the next two or three weeks. We're putting, our plan is to put in eight valves in strategic locations on the old mains, plus we have valves where we did our interconnections on this, that'll give us some redundancy, and it'll give us some protection for failures. And right now, there's, I think there's, I don't remember how many valves work on the main. This will give us eight more working valves than we have now, so that would be a good thing. That's a start.
So this would be a good start in the right direction, so we can start repairing roads later and not have to worry about tearing up freshly paved roads, kind of like with Locust Street, had we paved over it, we would be tearing it up because now there's a leak in the middle of it currently. Okay?
And that is the trend, is that cities now, I mean, it's pretty rare that we put a water line under a street, we have to cross them sometimes, so when you parallel them, try to stay behind the curve, and, you know, so you don't have to have that, that problem.
What is, do we have a timeline for the completion of all these projects?
I don't, we can, depends on when we, it's going to be, I mean, and Alvin talked to that, as far as when we can even get the closing done, I'm assuming before. Mid-November. Mid-November, so we would be under construction, I should probably, you know, be under construction in maybe next May, May or June.
At that point, when do you think we'll get the, what's the, what's the priority of projects, and when do you think we'll complete the last one, and what is that?
I, I think priority would be that we start with the water tower, and actually, we need the water lines as well, those are very important. So I think the total construction period for the tower and for all the mains and for the controls, it's going to be, it's going to be a year long project, overall.
Does this, the, the cost of these two million mains, does that include fixing the street properly once we have to tear it up to get to the lines?
Well, okay, if we have to get it to the street, okay, like, we will repair it back to what it exists. Now, Locust is an odd situation, because all the materials have been removed on Locust, but say some other street, I can think of a street now, but Mill, say for example. If we have to get out to the street to do a cut and plug or do an interconnection, we will repair that back to what it is now, but it'll be set up to where then if you ever come back and redo, Mill, I'm just going to name it, it comes to my mind. Yeah, so you, it'd be set up to where you can easily adapt what we did to your proposed surface.
So if there's lines in the street to put new ones in, you don't have to remove?
And we should leave the lines there, we can plug them on either end.
Okay.
Yeah, and we don't remove them.
So you wouldn't have to rip up the street?
No.
But then we can go later and repair it without?
There would be sanctions. Of course, you have to.
Yeah.
Well, I had someone to meet complain today about one of the streets, I think it was actually Mill, where there was some water project spread, it's just filled in gravel on the side. I want to make sure it's in our budget, that, you know, so fix it properly.
It's not inside this project, but our street funds are available, and you weren't on the council, but when we tore up Locust, we, at that point, as an operating, operating efficiency decided that before we tear out any more streets for resurfacing, we were going to make sure we had the funds in place to replace the water lines that were going to be relevant, so. And, and so we do have the street funds available, I think we budgeted four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for street resurfacing this year.
I did a very big project in El Reno in mid to late two, twenty, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We did a tremendous amount of streets in town, but the council decided, same issue, let's get our water lines out. So we spent a year and a half getting water lines out of the road all over town before we started on Mill and overlays or reconstruct, so it's, if you can do it, it's good, it's good.
So in your opinion, the importance of these three projects, would you rank them? I mean, what, what would you put them?
They're all equal.
Really?
They are. The telemetry is really, it's very important, and I mean, the town, the tank, but the mains in town, if we're not giving people the water, we're just going to tear up streets, I mean, that's, you know, water funds, I'd say they're all equal.
So how, how do you tie in with Waterworth, the girl that was, I mean?
Is there any relation, like connection there?
Bill would be able to give us, you know, replacement costs and stuff like that for our infrastructure, which we would provide to her to put in in long-term, long.
Over time, we've been looking at, at replacement over time, and we have a lot of information we can put to them.
For instance, when the ARPA money came out, that we were going to potentially, the state was getting about two billion dollars, we decided that we wanted to, and it was supposed to be used on water when it first came out, well, we asked Bill to put together our, basically our entire system, and what was that, three, four years ago?
Yeah.
And, and four years ago, we were looking at sixty million dollars, and, and that, you know, wasn't funding what became available, but he, he basically put together the estimate for the entire system replacement that they had replaced.
So if we can give them, we have lots of stuff we can share with them.
So how is Waterworth going to help you? I mean, or help us, I mean, if he's already done it.
I don't know.
That's not him. That's not him. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, no, I, no.
ARPA is a budgeting tool, not a doing.
So if you say sixty?
Bill might be able to tell us that our infrastructure is going to cost a hundred million dollars to replace the whole thing, Bill's not going to help us figure out how we're going to set our rates and borrow money and all that stuff.
I could take a stab at it, but you wouldn't.
We don't want Bill doing that.
So what, this, you talked about, you know, four or five years ago, you said it's sixty million, now it's a hundred million, I mean, if we wait a few years to do this project, it could go up by thirty, forty percent, is that correct?
Very much so, yeah. I, I never dreamed it would have gone up, you know, I wouldn't have been more surprised if I woke up and wondered if my head's sunk to the carpet to see prices like this. I've never seen this, and I don't see that they've gotten used to it. It's not going back down, I don't. My experience is, it's like a ratchet, you know, it goes up like a rocket and down like a feather. I can't think of me out of this.
So we get this project done, like you said, I think you said ten to twelve percent of what the overall need for the city is to rehabilitate?
On the mains.
Okay, on the mains and stuff like that? What, when will we have to come back here to talk about another note, to pay for that, to do those additional repairs?
That, that's what we have to determine.
Yeah.
The needs of, the, the needs are greater than this project.
Yeah, they are, but this, again, like the mayor said, this was, we carved this out, so there would not be an immediate increase, there wouldn't be an increase in your rate structure or in your, what's the word, uh, overall?
Basically, when the mayor called and said, we've got all those water needs, and, you know, the kind of your first response is, we can't do all those water improvements, I mean, without a massive rate increase, but, I mean, you know, we, we, let's, let's, ultimately said, look, what can we do, how much, if we kept basically your debt payments approximately where they are now, on a going forward basis, I mean, these are all long-term assets, so if we've borrowed over thirty years, feathered these in as you have debt falling off, how much can we do, and, and we came up with a number of roughly five million dollars, and then Bill was tasked with, we have five million dollars, what are the things that we could, more than anything else, that can be done for approximately five million dollars, so he spread them out over the three areas he's described to you, and fix your worst lines, deal with the thing, the tower, what's the thing that could happen that could shut the system down, and then the communication equipment, so, I mean, that, that's real, we, we didn't come, we didn't say, Bill, how much money do we need, we gave you five million, we said, Bill, this is how much money we can borrow without increasing the payments over time, what will that do for us?
I do think if you do this, you're not, you're not losing anything by doing this, in the future, if the, if your financial situation is such, you do another transaction in the future, you can do another tranche of lines, for example, I mean, you haven't lost anything by doing this now, in my opinion.
I mean, a, a lot of communities, I mean, whether it's water lines or sewer lines, a big portion of these lines are statewide, but at about the same time, they're all falling apart at about the same time, and, so, water lines and sewer lines are the kind of things that Bill, when he gets to that component, he has a budget number, he bids it out, and he bids it out on a linear foot basis or something, I'm guessing, and basically, if your bids come in aggressive, you can do more line than, than maybe you'd hope to, than if bids came in high, you can do less, but you're picking, you're doing them in the order of what historically are the biggest trouble areas for the city, so it's, it's what you do at your house, I mean, you've got fourteen things you wanna fix at your house, which is the thing that's causing you the most heartache, and, because you can't afford all of them.
We'll do base and alternate, so we'll do, we'll have a base bid, then we'll throw in some alternates, because maybe, by then, you know, maybe by the time we receive bids, things will have adjusted in the, in a, in the right direction, do a little more, I mean, and stay within our constraints, our funding constraints.
I just, I kinda, I like the projects that we're doing, but I see, kinda how we came up with that number, the amount that we can need without going up, and I think that's, you know, the amount that we have to work with, I just, I don't think I've been on this council a year without having a major water disaster, where we all had to come in here and promise to almost at any expense, fix something with our meters, or our issues with our lines, or things like that, and I don't wanna be here next year, having dedicated this money to these projects and they're underway, be under the same torts.
I can guarantee you, if we have, if we don't do this, we'll be here in this council chambers, having emergency meetings over and over and over and over again, because they've only been getting worse and worse, in the, I don't know how many years I've sat here, seven years, and we've had three emergency meetings in the last six months, nine months?
With major breaks.
With major breaks.
I guess, I, I don't think he'll promise me that once we agree to fix this, that we might, we might have that same situation in six months.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, because, I mean.
And I don't think anybody would, and so, it's a possibility we might be.
But we can sure take sixteen thousand linear feet out of that problem.
Out of, how many linear feet do you think of the entire line?
I, I don't have an exact number with me, but I thought it was like twenty-seven miles, so.
Or worse yet, that tank completely failed, and now we have no water service within the city limits at all.
No.
I, voting no on this is setting this city up for failure.
You have to start chipping away at it.
We, we can either, we can either sit and put plaster in the cracks, and hope that things get better, on a hope and a prayer, or we can actually take action and do something that is propelling the city forward, and that decision is what is before us today.
The decades I've lived in Alba, we've always just done what we had to to get by, as I've noticed, we have not done any major, major repairs unless we had to, like our tanks. We can't keep just doing deferred maintenance, we have to get these lines replaced, we're gonna end up being where our tower fails, and no one's gonna have water, and then we're gonna have to wait for them to repair it, or DEQ's gonna come in and shut us down, because we're behind on the times, on how we're tracking stuff, and no, no citizen in this city is gonna want that.
And here's the other reality, the, the structure of this that was done, is that our current cash outflows and debt service really don't increase, I think they will for a short period, correct?
On, on average, they're gonna, I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna have a little relief on the front end, the way we've structured it, it's gonna go up a little, but we, and we, we hold back that relief money, so basically, on average, your payments are gonna stay the same.
We define relief, I mean, you're talking about borrowing money to make the payments at the beginning.
Capitalizing interest, right.
I don't know if this would be appropriate time for Alan to, to speak towards the particulars of the financial.
He's doing a great job.
Quick question, Alan Brooks is our bond counsel, and Chris Anderson's our financial advisor on, on projects such as these, but if there's, you have another question for Bill?
The lifespan of these three things, the estimated lifespan that we're living at.
Okay, so the water mains, over thirty years, okay, the tower, over thirty years?
Let, let's be more, the water mains are more than, I mean, you're saying over thirty years, I mean, they're pro, I mean, poly-pine, I mean, I mean.
Okay, the way things have been going here, we're using cast iron, sandcast right now, that's ninety years old, okay, so, you know, it could be four years, could be fifty years, there's PVC in place, all of the state that we've done, well, I, I didn't do it, but my dad and his partner did, that, you know, they've been in place since seventy, still in use, so, you know, so that's seventy, fifty, so, you know, fifty year life, I mean, none of us will.
And the tank is how many years old?
The existing tank was good during the war, so the war was in, over in forty-five, right?
Just when you say, you know, number like thirty years, so, whenever we paid off, that, I mean, that, that concerns me thirty years, is that a, I mean, when it's paid off, it's gonna be ready to replace again, how do we ever get ahead of that?
Not the water mains and the tank.
Okay.
Okay, now, potentially, the, the radio system, we might have to add some stuff onto it, but the systems I was telling you on the phone the other day, they're made to where they're stackable, or that you can integrate new technologies with that, the old stuff, pretty much, you have to throw out, okay, and, we're gonna use a supplier that does not use proprietary software or equipment, so that, in the future, whatever, whatever, uh, uh, end user, or a, I'm gonna call it, designer on the system can use that equipment and not have to have a, you know, proprietary PLC, for example, that only, only one company has all the codes to, this would be something that, you know, that anybody, if they're in that business, can come and edit it for us and upgrade it to a new, whatever, so.
Potentially, the water lines could last over a hundred years.
If, potentially, yeah, we don't know, nobody knows for sure about PVC, but it's looking like PVC will make it a hundred years, I mean, it, and ductile, the problem, ductile's great, it was, in nineteen sixty-three is the best thing going, but, it's not real good with, with corrosive soils, so PVC seems to work a little better, and polyethylene seems to work better than that.
It's time to start updating our systems, we've gone way too long without any updates.
Are there any other questions regarding the, the construction scope of the project?
So when you say the poly works better, is that just a, but, is it significantly the higher cost, I'm assuming, or?
No, actually, the, the HDP poly, poly, polyethylene has come down to where some places is a little lower than PVC, so, but, say, five years ago, it was lower, it was like a thirty percent.
So if, if it works better, and it's reasonable cost, is that, they're similar costs, is that, are we going to, I mean, how do you make that decision?
What I've been doing, like, I have some clients that now that are only using poly, but most of my cities are still using PVC, and they're using poly for long bores and things like that, we could do poly, do poly, do the job in El Reno right now, that's gonna be about five thousand feet on Rock Island, and it's poly, the whole job's directional bore, and, uh, just, it presents a little problems with meters and things like that, but, so, we can look at that, poly, we can, polyester, all that, inside diameters last the PVC a little bit, but, you know.
I mean, we could always put that in as an alternate, you know, bid at PVC, bid at poly, but, but I'll tell you from my conversation with Drake, um, once we go with, and even Bill, once we go with poly, um, repairs on poly are significantly more intense.
They're more intense, but they're less frequent, so, you have to balance that, so.
I think past discussions, we've said that the, the poly makes sense, like he was just saying, poly makes sense for those really long runs, whereas the PVC makes more sense when you're gonna be tapping into it a lot.
What's the engineering fees for this project?
Uh, you know, I don't know what it was, we just, we stuck a, it's on, I'll tell you real quick.
And then I didn't know if you had the, the bond and legal consequences.
I don't have that, the engineering was around three hundred, the, we had forty-two thousand for staking, we had resident project representative, we want an inspector up here on the tank, okay, now, the water mains, we need to talk about that, uh, we'll figure out what we need to do on the water mains, but definitely on the tank, we gotta have somebody here, one of our guys, and, uh, then we have fifty-seven thousand for a geotechnical study and construction materials testing for the tank, and we'll provide you with a detailed budget and engineer report for one of the meetings here, whenever, if you guys want to, we can show that to you, so it'll be.
Good, and was it sixty thousand, was it fifty-five for the geo study, or am I way off?
Fifty-seven, five is what I thought was gonna be for a geotechnical study and construction materials testing, it's like we did the last tank, when you pour into concrete, you grab samples of the concrete as you're going, you, you test the subgrade as you're building it, but then the geotechnical study I wanna do, before we even get into design, to find out what is there, you know, what kind of footing foundation do we need to do, and, uh, gives us some direction, so.
This would be really important there, because I think we're all sand, it'd be really important there, because we're all sand.
Yes, and it's wet.
This might be another good question, and, and I obviously know very little about water projects, but, is there any warranty that comes with anything like this, I mean, you're talking a lot of money, I mean, is there any guarantee for a certain period of time, how does that work?
What we customarily do is, we have a one-year maintenance bond, or one, one-year warranty, we can adjust that up, we can go up to two years, that's, two is about the most anybody does, that I've ever seen, uh, some cities do it for, like, developments, that require a two-year maintenance bond, the developer's contractor provides the city, but, customarily, we do a one-year maintenance bond, and that, that really seems to be sufficient. Now, on the radios and things like that, they'll have a separate little warranty that the manufacturer provides, sometimes with pumps, there's extra warranties, but, overall, the bonding companies are pretty amenable to providing a one-year warranty, and we could do the two-year, when we get down to that, we can talk about that before we go to bids, if it's worth spending their extra money, it costs us about two and a half percent more, which is, might be a substantial number at the end of the day, for one, for more year.
I mean, one of the things you do is, you have an inspector on the job, right, and part of the, the reason to have the inspector there is that when you're, you're seeing the project being installed appropriately, and, uh, which is, again, standard as well.
And we've, and we've provided inspection on some of the things, we did it on the towers, or the tower on the hill, we, and I think we did, I think that's the only project we've actually provided here, town, lately, the last ten years, if I can think of, let's use the example, I can't think of the other, but yeah, but we need to do that on the, on the tower for sure, so.
Any other questions regarding the project itself? All right, Alan, would you mind, uh, speaking to us about the, the dollars and cents?
I'll try, Chris, I'll kinda tag team this, I mean, he's the financial guy, I'm legal, um, well, you know the background, okay, we've talked about that, how did, how did we come up with the five million dollar number, I mean, you're, you're paying utility debt service of about five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars a year, and our goal is to stay basically, year over year, within that number, all right, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll kinda, we'll dip under that number for a few years, the money that we pick up there, we'll push down, and the years will go over a little bit, but, based upon kind of the budget we've come up with, in aggregate, we're, we're never gonna be dipping into your pocket, into your, into your city coffers, for more on average than you've been paying, uh, historically, or at least this year, okay, uh, so that's, that's how kind of the cash flows work, again, it's a thirty-year transaction that we're talking about, that the idea was, again, maximize the dollars we can generate for these projects, while at the same time not increasing debt service year over year. Oakland Water Resources Board, uh, you all are, are familiar with them, we got a million dollars of grant money from the water board on a meter project, year, year or so ago, they have a program called their Financial Assistance Program, basically, they find, communities come to them and say, we need to borrow money through this program, they go out and they issue bonds in, in, in blocks of funding, fund specifically identified projects, um, this particular project, in the last sixty days or so, Broken Arrow and Owasso, kinda simultaneously, or within a few days of each other, approached us with larger projects, uh, since then, we've added projects for ceiling, and a water tower project for Duncan, and, and this project, potentially, all of the other projects are locked down, they've been approved by the governing body, they're moving forward, and there's gonna be, and round numbers, about fifty million dollars of borrowing between those projects, they're, they're gonna happen, okay, the Water Resources Board has a meeting tomorrow, that they're gonna approve Broken Arrow and Owasso, um, ceilings, Duncan will be going to the Water Board's meeting next month, you all approve this transaction, you would be going to the Water Board for approval at their meeting next month, uh, they meet on the third Tuesday of each month, um, they're gonna authorize the issuance of their FAP bonds, that being, they would actually go out to market and price, the bonds are determined, sell, determine what the interest rate would be, based on market conditions on that date, and, uh, from that point forward, we'd, we'd know what the interest rate is, and the transaction would close in a mid-November timeframe, when I say close, dollars would be available to start drawing down in connection with the project, uh, we targeted, again, about a five million dollar number, in the last thirty days or so, interest rates have gone up by about thirty basis points, three tenths of one percent, if the interest rates stay where they are today, that would generate about four million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of project funds, uh, if rates went up more, that means we have a little less project funds, if rates went down, that means we've moved, you know, back to the, the five million dollar number, but, basically, the idea is, we would not have, we, we would structure the transaction so we could have as much as five million, we wouldn't issue more debt than that, and then we, our cap on our interest rate in the resolution indicates that the interest rate would be not to exceed five and a half percent, we're about seventy basis points from that right now, okay, rates could go up, they could go down, we don't know that until the Water Board is out marketing their bonds based on market conditions on that day, so that's why we, we don't approve a specific interest rate, if we're above the rate that's authorized, then you would fall out of the pool, um, and, or if we came back between now and then and authorized a higher cap, but, that's kind of the process of how it works, the Water Board receives applications for these monies, they review those applications, that's one of the things Mr. Gander does, and, uh, they take it to their board for ultimate approval, but each of these transactions, essentially, we have to have approval from the governing body, they want the money before the Water Board goes out and markets bonds, it's, it's, there used to be a program called a blind pool, where they would go out and issue fifty or a hundred million dollars in bonds, and they would set an account, and then as people needed the money, they'd come in and borrow, from a tax law standpoint, we can't do that anymore, so they only go out and issue these bonds as there are committed needs for money, so, that's kinda what we're here to decide tonight, if you all wanna be part of this, this group, that is gonna be going to market in November, the, uh, the thought is, I, I was asked this question, you know, what if we just, you know, we, we need five million dollars, what if we just did it on our own? The Water Board has not done a financing, to my knowledge, that small, where they go out and issue five million dollars of bonds for one borrower, it's, it's less efficient, you, you, you receive less interest from potential purchasers of bonds, which typically results in a higher rate, the Water Board also has fixed costs that they incur, when we, when we're part of a larger financing, uh, those costs that the Water Board has are prorated over the, the group of borrowers, based upon the dollar amount, so it's a fifty-five million dollar transaction, you, you would essentially pay your prorate a share of five million, or, of fifty-five million, so, again, there's efficiencies, and, and frankly, we, we would recommend that you try to go out and do a Water Board loan for, of this nature, for five million dollars, just really. Just really probably doesn't make sense. Your better option is, is just sit back and see if another group comes together that you could end up with and do it that way. There, I, I mean, we've kind of come to this, this point of, of the FAP program, and this is a lot of what Chris does, is you've got different ways you can borrow money. As an example, you could go to the bank, or take quotes from banks to borrow this money. But banks, as a general rule of thumb, don't want to give you a fixed interest rate past fifteen years. We need the thirty-year amortization. These are long-lived assets. And if we did it over fifteen years, you would be doing a whole lot less project. So you, you kind of throw the option out of, of a bank loan. You could issue your own revenue bonds, but I mean, the Water Resources Board is AAA credit. In other words, they have the highest credit ratings available. They were, this program was put in place so that communities, like this community, can, can borrow from the program based on their credit rating, borrow at a lesser interest rate as opposed to going out issuing your own bonds. If you issue your own bonds, you're, you're going to have additional costs involved, rating agencies, as an example, rating loans, uh, underwriting fees. Bottom line, it's just, City of Oklahoma City, City of Tulsa use this program. And they, City of Oklahoma City has a AAA credit rating, all right? So it's just, this is the vehicle that, that seems to make sense based on your projects and the current situation. So that, that was the recommendation. Once we kind of got the parameters of what you wanted to do, we're recommending you move forward with the Financial Assistance Program loan. I'll stop. I'll pause.
Am I correct in understanding that the, the nature of this vote requires, um, six of our eight council members in order to pass?
That is correct. Yeah, basically, the way the statute reads, it requires a two-thirds approval. But even though you don't vote, I mean, the statute doesn't really speak to the situation where the mayor doesn't vote like, like yours. But you have to have two-thirds or six of the nine, how you came up with the number. But you don't get to be part of the nine for voting process. So, you know, six yes votes are required to move forward. And that's just a safeguard put in the statute.
But these groups don't come together very often, do they?
You know, uh, it, it's, it's very, it's sporadic. I mean, we've gone for a long period of time where we haven't had a group. And then we've, we've had, this, this should be the third in a period of time that must close together. But we don't know, we don't know what the next, you know, we don't know if it'd be another few months or a year or two years. I mean, we've gone, we've gone periods of years without having one of these, but it's just, it's kind of, it's kind of market-driven to. No guarantees when another one's coming.
At our current rate structure, this doesn't affect, uh, that, and then you say it's our debt service isn't increased. How long approximately will it be before we'll be able to borrow more money without changing our current rate structure? Or with, I mean, with affecting our current, I guess, debt service, how long will it need?
You are going to be paying about this level. Through about, numbers are small.
Around twenty, thirty-nine, somewhere in there.
Yep, that's, yeah, twenty, twenty, thirty-eight, twenty, thirty-nine, your payments start dropping down. You know, you, you go from the roughly, you know, our target number, you drop down to about five fifty, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five forty-nine, five forty-nine. It stays there for a while, then you drop down to, uh, and, and you drop down to four hundred and eighteen thousand a year in twenty forty-nine. So you get another drop there, but that last year, one to about five years that you're at that level. So for, let's call it, any, any measurable drop is twenty-five years out.
So I mean, we're looking without, it'll be a, a while before we're able to borrow more money without a, a change in our debt service payment.
Yes, sir.
So this is, I mean, these are the three, I mean, if, we're talking twenty-five years, but I mean, for, and I know our, the CCA, it goes up yearly and out, I mean, but still it's.
But again, I think your point is, is a good one, the fact that, and, and our goal, all right? This was, the model was put together with the idea in mind of layering in debt where debt goes off, with the idea again. The vast majority of communities when they borrow money today, they have to raise rates to pay for it. In other words, they're not just layering in where debt falls off, okay? They're, they're, it's, this is, we're, we're glad that you had debt falling off, that we could fill in and generate five million dollars a project, okay? Versus, a lot of times, it's a situation of, here's our debt service and we need something else. So you have to lay on top of the existing debt service, which means obviously your payments are going up and. Depending on, you might, they might or might not have the revenues paid. That, that might be a rate increase. It might come out of additional fund balance that you have.
There's no penalty either if we pay off early. Say, are, we had like an economic boom and we had extra revenues coming in. We can make more payments.
This loan is typically prepayable after ten years, okay? And, and after ten years, it's typically prepayable in a whole or in part with no penalty, okay? But reason for that is when the Water Resources Board sells their bonds, the bondholders want, that, that, we, we could negotiate and have a earlier prepayment, but it would result in a higher interest rate. But the short answer is it's generally a ten-year prepayment.
And are you, is your firm handling all the other municipalities' bonds?
Uh, yes, we are. We do, I mean, we do a big percentage of this work around the state. So, I mean, that, that's not always the case, but vast, I think on every one of these transactions, we're in bond council. I, I know we are.
And you're at, I mean, your fees in there is a one and a half percent. His fee is one and a half percent. Those fees being set, um, we talked in the fun a little bit about that, has to do with the number, uh, the amount that a municipality is borrowing. But that's, I mean, the, the city doesn't, I mean, do we shop for, uh, I know this is a very specific, you know, what you do is not, not, there's not a whole lot of, you know, people doing that. But how do we, you know, make sure we're getting the best possible price on this service? I don't, is, I guess, one of my questions I had.
I started working with Alan when Angelica left. I believe we've been, the city had been working with you prior. And he returned my phone calls.
So I mean, it just, he tells us what it costs and we pay. I mean, there's not, I don't know if there's other, I mean, I, that's just the only, you know, thing I was curious about is on, you know, I know whenever we're spending a, a huge amount of money or a, a large amount of money, you know, there's times we're taking to go to bid. And I know this is a different circumstance, but I just, I don't know.
What you really, what I'll say, that, that, I mean, if we're talking about the value of, of Alan and his firm, is that he has no guarantee that he's going to get paid. Because if we sit at this table and vote this down, he's, you, you put in a, a, at least, you, you said six weeks, and I'll, I'll say that was, um, very conservative of work on our behalf, just on this project. And every time we've, every time I've reached out to him, he has, you know, bent over backwards to try to do, um, the, the, the figures and the strategies that, that we need in order to put a project together that we can both afford and accomplish. And I, I, I don't know if you need my endorsement, but I would recommend, you know, Alan and Chris to.
We will certainly accept your.
Well, that's, I just don't know, I mean, on stuff that's this specific, I don't know how you look at, you know, I don't know what's a, a fair price. I'm not, you know, so with, going in, I just didn't know if there's, if we talk to other companies or how, how stuff like this works. Because when you're talking, you know, on five billion seventy-five thousand each, and I know they have a lot of people and a lot of time invested, but I didn't know what, you know, what the procedures are on this type of service, um, on, you know, making sure that we're getting the, the best deal for this type of service.
Mr. Parsons, let me, let me, I've been calling you Jim all day, so I'll call you, whichever you like, Mr. Jim. We, um, over time, we're doing a large part of work around the state. And I think it's because we do it at what communities feel like is a fair price, all right? And more importantly, we do what we say we're going to do. And, um, I mean, by way of example, you know, you asked me about the pool geo. You know, we went through the whole process, drafted all the documents, process, called the election, you know, did everything that needed to happen. The voters heard that, didn't get paid. I mean, that's just kind of, it's, it's, all of our work is on a contingent fee basis. That's normal in Oklahoma. It's normal nationwide. Um, so, I, I mean, there's, and as a general rule of thumb, okay? There is no magic index out there, but general rule of thumb is the, it's the transaction size goes up, the percentage tends to go down, all right? It's, it's, you kind of factor in one, what are the likely, what's likely that this is going to happen? Okay, are we, are we, how much time do we think we might potentially waste? And, uh, complexity of the transaction, size of the transaction, we, we factor all those things in. And, and I went back and, and looked at other transactions we did for you all, and it looks like our fees on average have been between one and a half and two percent. Lots of the smaller transactions, the percentage ended up getting higher, uh, but it's, you can't say. That's, that's kind of how, the way it works, and it's worked. We, we try to make sure that you're happy. And if you're not happy, you're going to call somebody else.
Did you guys model this with a rate increase? Would that help us? I mean, are there benefits for a rate increase? Have you looked at it? If we did raise rates, could we do more?
Absolutely, absolutely.
For, for this deal, I asked him not to do that, though.
Yeah, this, our, our, our parameter is what.
Can you see a benefit of doing more? Are we shortchanging ourselves a little bit by doing less?
I mean, one, I'm a firm believer that this project's going to cost more next year than it's going to cost. I mean, but I, I think we're going to continue to see prices go up because we have all of these debts, these major infrastructure projects nationwide. But specifically in Oklahoma, like the, the million dollars that we got for a meter project, that was, that incentivized a project. There's been a lot of the quote ARPA money that it's all allocated for the most part, now, but a lot of it's still sitting on the sidelines. While the engineers are trying to get the projects engineered and, and get matching funds and all those. There's hundreds of millions of dollars for the projects in Oklahoma. Hundreds of millions is an understatement, okay? How much ARPA money did the state go out? Crazy, no? And anyway, those projects are going to continue to feed into the system for the next five to seven years. So I think every year you wait on an infrastructure project, I think it's going to cost more. And so to Mr. Bowman, to your question, if you can, I mean, you know you're going to have to fix things. And in my opinion, the sooner you do that, the more cost-effective that's going to become by virtue of inflation. That's my, that's purely my theory. I could be dead wrong on that.
If we're looking at what we've talked about, if we say, okay, let's step it up a notch and go to the next level.
Maybe if, if that's the will of the, of the authority of the council to do that, but it's going to, it's, right now, I would think you have a lot of excess revenue laying around. So the, the point being, you're going to have to either raise rates or.
Hence my question.
Yeah, or, or generate more, you know, ask, take the voters and their sales tax questions, something. You're going to have to come up with some additional revenue unless you have fluff in your budget right now that you can increase your debt payments. And again, the parameter we started with is, we don't really have any fluff in our budget. We want to keep our debt service payments where they are generally today. But, I mean, I think.
So Mr., when Mr. Winter gave the financial report, he, he made mention that we have not transferred anything from Utility Authority to the General Fund this fiscal year. We budgeted one and a half million dollars a year. It, it's less this year than it was last year. But basically, at least one and a half million dollars a year, we budgeted to transfer from Utility Authority to the General Fund. As we get the General Fund to, to be on a better financial footing, the Utility Authority funds are available for, for projects. I mean, if we were to, if, if we were to not need the Utility Authority for a single dollar for the General Fund, that's one and a half million dollars that we'd have every year. And, you know, are we there? We're not there right now. We've gone two months, which is good. But we haven't, you know, hit, you know, really any struggles yet this year, and every year there are some. So I think long-term, when we talk about what all projects we need to do, it's going to be a bigger conversation than what we're having this evening, a much bigger conversation than what we're having.
Additional revenues.
Because we are going to have to be talking about what are the inflated rates over time to, to replace infrastructure? But also, what do, what, what do our revenue streams look like? And whether or not that's, um, you know, strictly Utility Authority revenue, whether that's some other kind of revenue out there, or whatever it might be. But we have to, um, that's not on the agenda discussed this evening. I mean, we're, this evening, we're strictly talking about a project that we don't have to increase revenue in order to accomplish. But I do think, um, you know, the council would be, you know, doing a disservice to the community if we don't have, start having conversations about the long-term plans. Because twenty-five years is a long time to go if all we're going to do is projects without increasing our debt, you know, obligation.
And you're not going to make the twenty-five years.
No, we're, we're going to have some blow up before that.
You're going to have other project systems that are going to fail that you're going to, you're, you're going to have to deal with. But I, I do not foresee, I mean, I don't, I can't, I don't, can't think of a community in the state that's going to go twenty-five years without having additional capital needs. Regardless of how progressive they've been in the past.
And we can't live on the fear that the projects that are being discussed and are selected here currently tonight in the plan might not be the thing that breaks in two years, because that might not be the thing that was going to break in two years. But it's definitely something now that is likely not going to break in the next two years.
If we fit.
And we've got to start somewhere.
I hate to be the one that says it, but I'm going to. So if someone comes to you and say, and I, and this, and, and again, like I, our two-hour conversation earlier, I hope I don't offend you. I've probably said that several more times, but if, I mean, because this is something that's not, you don't go to bid, you don't, I mean, we just have used you in the past, so we use you now. But I mean, if someone goes to you and say, hey, we, we like it, but, you know, one and a half, that's too, I mean, in my world, in my, everything, there's, there's room everywhere. So like, I, I hate to say it, but I mean, without knowing the other options, that's one of the things I'm struggling on, struggling with is, you know, I don't even, I know you're at one, one and a half percent, and maybe, maybe that's a great deal, but I don't know that's a great deal.
It's not a great deal. It's not a bad deal. It's not a, I mean, we're not giving the services.
No, and I understand, but say someone's, I mean, if, if someone wants to, and say, you're at one and a half, we'd like to see it at one and a quarter percent. How, I mean, I mean, is that a, you know, every dime, whenever we're talking as much work as we need to do matters here. And so I, I know it may sound like this is being a penny pincher here, but I think, you know, just having those conversations, if we haven't had those conversations, and maybe, maybe that's something you say, hey, you know, I, I appreciate you asking, but, but it's not worth my time. But that's, that's where I'm at, is, you know, we got to, we got to look at it, how we can save every penny.
Is this rates negotiable?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where I'm at right now.
And, and, I mean, here's the short answer, okay? I mean, I'm not, I, I don't, I, I don't negotiate my fees on a podium, I don't, I don't need to. So, um, I mean, I, and I'll, I'll even go further. I guarantee you, you can find somebody else that would do it for less, okay? And you can find somebody else that will do it for more, all right? I mean, I think we're in a, in a fair zone, all right? And again, a lot of what we do for the city is, I mean, I, I've probably talked to the mayor thirty times, okay? You know, since the last time we did a transaction, and we don't send bills for that, all right? We, we don't, we don't, you asked me the question, do you work by hour? We don't work by the hour, all right? I'd, I'd be terrible at it, okay? Because I, I wouldn't keep track of my time. Because I, I wouldn't keep track of my time. But we do a lot in between transactions to support our clients, which is why our clients continue to come back to us. So again, we think it's, we think it's a fair fee and a reasonable fee, but would somebody else out there do it for you? They would? I, I would be also honest, and at least in my own opinion, I don't think you're gonna find anybody else that's gonna do the kind of job we did, all right? One of my partners, Nate Ellis, worked at the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for a number of years. He was over the legal staff at this financial assistance program. He and Chris work closely together on numbers. I mean, we, we have a connection, all right? On the, I probably talk to the Water Resources Board staff three or four times a day, not three or four times a week, three or four times a day, because we do, I mean, a huge percentage of the work that goes to the Water Resources Board is work that our firm does. So again, I think you get what you pay for, and that's...
What do we lose on, if we don't do this tonight, our transaction costs will increase by, if, if we bring this up in a future day, just the, the, the cost to borrow the money, not the, not the percent of, of bond counsel, but just by not doing the, the project, not approving it tonight.
I, I mean, Mayor, it'd be more a case of, again, we, I would not recommend you go forward on, kind of on a solo five million dollar deal. It's just, it doesn't make sense. I don't want a word to do it, that it would not be cost effective, okay?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to articulate, without the number, without the knowledge of the actual numbers, is that at one and a half percent, whether you reduce that or not, just the time involved with not approving this tonight is gonna cost us significantly.
We could go a year and everything, costs go up 10%, and yeah, we save half a percent on a fee, but the whole cost, the whole time, it goes up 10%.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, and, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, that that conversation should have happened before we got here, but I don't know, and being on council, it's, I wanna sit here and watch out for every penny of the taxpayers' dollars, so, but I'm also not in the position to have known if that conversation was had. So I, again, I'm not, I understand that you guys are probably, you know, the, the top, and I, and it's good to use the people who are, and I'm, it's an important thing and a lot of money, so I know we, it's important to use people who, who know what they're doing. But like I said, I, I think it's just something that, that conver, whenever you're talking this much money, I mean, the conversation of, hey, can you do it? But I mean, and, and whether that's, you know, appropriate or not for the city council, I don't know, and, but I do think that, you know, that's a conversation that should happen anytime you're, you're talking about something like this, so.
I'm just saying, if we wait a whole year, and it goes up 10%, that cost is 500,000 more. If we find another person, we do it for 1%, so 1.5, that saves us 25,000 dollars. So 475,000 dollars.
Oh, I completely, I completely agree.
So yeah, I'm not saying we should, maybe we should have had that conversation in the beginning, but this is where we're at now, there's no going back, no reverse button. So it's whether we wanna move forward with this tonight.
I'll make a commitment to you that I'll get the rates of, the percentages of every firm I can find.
Right.
But I, we need to do this tonight.
Well, I would think management's gonna be giving the best rates we can anyway. I mean, but that's why you guys are there, so...
I mean, it, you... Alan returned my phone calls.
And I would just argue in Philly's...
We looked, I mean, we, the first time that I went, that we had a, 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 a project that we needed, Alan's the one that returned my phone calls. So either we weren't important to the others, or Alan's just really good and makes everybody feel important. But, but Alan returned the phone calls, the rate was not unreasonable. He's right. I, I can't show you the rates for everybody out there, but he's not, you know, feeding you a line. There are lower rates and there are higher rates.
I mean, by way of example, the, the million dollars you got on the meter project, that was because we knew the money was out there.
And, and it's because of Nate having had the experience on the water board and being a part of his, his team. That's a million dollars that we did not have to pay. I mean, one and a half percent being their rate, I don't know that we would have had the team assembled from bond counsel to be able to get us that grant.
It's just a, a question because, I mean, I, I don't know how this works. So it's not like, I mean, I'm just, I, I'll be honest, I don't know. So it's not like I'm, I, you know, I'll be the first to, to admit when I don't, I, it's just a question.
So we're all sitting around this table as people that, when we first took our seats, we did not know what was going on with a lot of the technical aspects of, of this level of leadership. But what we all have to do is make a commitment to do what's best for our community in the moments that we have opportunities to do so. And sometimes, sometimes we make mistakes, and sometimes those mistakes are when we don't do something. And sometimes it's a bigger mistake to not do something than it is to do something in, in order to, you know, wish that we had done a process differently prior to. This has been in the, I mean, these types of projects, there's a reason that state law does not require competitive bidding after, for, for bond counsel. It's because it's inefficient, and it takes away the ability of, of, of an entity to be able to choose an entity that really works best in each particular situation. There's communities out there, there's municipalities out there that aren't gonna work well with your firm, and there are municipalities out there that aren't gonna work well with other firms. And in this instance, I, we are doing our community, if we turn down an opportunity to move forward with 5 million, roughly 5 million dollars worth of water improvement projects at this moment, because you are not in favor of how I conducted this process, do the project impeach me? This project is worth doing, and it needs to be done now. Do the project impeach me? Take care of the people of this community. This is, this is not about, I do appreciate Alan and, and the work he has done for our community, and he's done a lot of work for our community that he hasn't gotten paid for, and he would continue to do that with no promises. And this is just a, our infrastructure, I mean, guys, I wish you could have spent the three nights out there on Highway 281. It's not, it, it's not a political issue. This is not a political issue. This is a matter of, our people need and deserve reliable water, and we have an opportunity to put more of that into this community than what we presently have today. We have an opportunity to do that without increasing their rates for this indebtedness. We have an opportunity to do that without further burdening our community. I, I mean, I can't imagine going up to the people and, and telling them that the city council did not approve these projects, and, and then, it might be weeks before that tank fails. It might be the week before we were supposed to go up and, and, and break ground. It, it could be any number of things that happen, and we either do it or we don't. We either do it or we don't. If you don't like the way I'm doing it, get rid of it. There's a process for doing that, but this is the right thing to do right now. I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-019, a resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma, the city approving action taken by the Alba Utility Authority, the authority authorizing issuance, sale, delivery of a promissory note of the authority to Oklahoma Water Resources Board, ratifying, confirming a lease agreement and operation maintenance contract pertaining to the water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste disposal systems, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Beer. I have a second by Mr. Bowman, to approve Resolution 2023-019 as stated. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dally?
No.
Thank you. This is important. Thank you, everybody that voted for this. This is important to our people. I'm glad we're gonna be able to do this.
We need reliable water. We can't let that go off the island.
I'm going to recess the city council and call the board of the utility authority, and we'll address the same issue there. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Dally?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Yes.
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
All right. We're gonna move down to item five. Discussion consideration and action, or discussion and consideration and take appropriate action, including but not limited to approval, denial, amendment, revision, or conditional approval in whole or in part of approving Resolution 2023-011, a resolution of the Alba Utility Authority, the borrower, authorizing a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in a total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 5,835,000, approving the issuance of a promissory note in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 5,835,000, secured by a pledge of revenues and authorizing its execution, designating a local trustee, approving and authorizing the execution of a trust agreement, approving, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of a security agreement, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement, and operation and maintenance contract pertaining to certain water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste management systems, ratifying and confirming a parity agreement, approving and authorizing a note purchase agreement, approving, approving various covenants, approving and authorizing applications to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, approving and authorizing professional services agreements, approving and authorizing payment of fees and expenses, and containing other provisions related thereto. So moved.
Second. Mayor, can I have one comment real quick?
You may.
Now that I don't feel like I have a gun to my head, like Chris and I just talked, again, since you're approving the transaction, we will each drop our fees by 10,000, okay? So the fee schedule, we talked about less than 10,000 on each one. I gotta tell you, I'm really glad I'm not driving home after what we've done, it's a stall at this point, but again, we are, we're, we love working for this community. It's a good community, and we wanna keep doing that, but just as a showing of good fact, we will adjust our contracts, it'll be the one and a half percent less, 10,000 on each one of them. So that'll, that'll save 20,000, and, and hopefully, again, create goodwill, and we'd like to continue to do any of this to do. Okay?
Thank you for everything you've done.
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Dr. Lahr, to approve Resolution 2023-011 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dally?
No.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Okay. So you're not driving home, though?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Myers Engineering. Michael.
I'll bring your steamer.
Yeah, let's take a recess.
Let's see what we can table until a future meeting. So my suggestion, I'm gonna go back to item number 11 on the city council report, and I suggest that we can table that.
I don't think you can. I think you just start plugging October. I always have to look in the quarter to start plugging.
I don't think it'll take that long.
All right. Item 11, discussion and action to approve ordinance number 2023-001, an amendment to the City of Alba Code of Ordinances, Article 5, Hotel Tax Sections 20-146 through 20-164, by revoking said sections in their entirety and replacing those sections with immediate ordinance permitting the Oklahoma Tax Commission to collect hotel taxes for the City of Alba.
I had a couple of questions on that. On the, it was, and this is just a question for Drew, maybe he might be, this is not a change necessarily, but with other changes, it is affected. So this Section 20-147, there is hereby levying an exempt tax of 5% upon the gross procedure or gross receipts supplied from all rents from every occupancy of a room in a hotel in the city, except that the tax shall not be imposed where the rent is less than the rate amount on file in the city clerk's office per day. Can you clarify what that means in there? Do we know, I mean?
I, the only thing I've looked at, I looked at this ahead of time, but it's been a week or so. I don't think there's any change. The only changes are the ones that are highlighted, so that's what it's, what it's not.
So what it means, Joe, is for OTC to do this for us, they charge us a fee of 5% of what they collect.
So I guess my concern is, this is removing the, the, out of all language, not occupied by permanent, permanent residence. So it, it even says apartments, and that's my concern, is I don't know, where do you draw the line, you know, from apartment?
My understanding is that the line is drawn where a lease agreement is drawn up.
Okay, so if there's a lease agreement, then...
Then our, then our permanent resident.
Okay.
So why does it, and this was my concern, is because earlier on in the definitions, it specifically strikes permanent residents out from the exclusions. And I don't, and that was a change that was made, and I don't understand why that change was made or needed to be made. I like the clarity of that language.
Now, OTC wanted this to come out of there, just because it, I don't know, it'd be a distinctive point if we left it in there, they just asked that it came out of there because we're also taking out the, right below it, this is my cursor, where it is.
It's on the...
Right there. We're also taking out the definition of permanent residence.
Which I, my, I, I don't see why we don't leave both of those sections. Because as that reads now, and I, I get what you're saying, is you believe that the line is drawn on when there's a lease agreement in place, but as that reads, there's nothing that mentions that? And as that reads, that means every landlord in town has to start collecting a motel tax, and we're gonna increase around.
Yes, that's exactly what it says.
Is, Drew, what, how do you interpret that? I think, I can't remember our initial conversation on this fee, but I, I had concern there as well.
I was gonna say, just as a motel, my, and I'm not, I will have sent them this far, but I talked to the hotel association, and I talked to another attorney, because I was concerned personally, because this is my family's business, it's the motel business, but we do, 30 out of 43 of our rooms are on a monthly basis with leases on file, because that's what we pivoted to, to stay in business. And my, and as a real estate agent, rental wise, my understanding, if, if we're talking about the lease agreement, I know there's, and, and I don't, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but there's a lot of the mom and pop landlord, hey, I have one real house, have tenants without a lease agreement that might be in there for five, six, one, I mean, who knows how long? So I think we really need the clarity of permanent residence still being 30 days for everyone who owns rental property, just because I, I think how it reads now from, from talking to people at the hotel association and another attorney, they were both concerned with it, and I am too personally.
So what, what page is that? Page one?
Oh, yeah.
Page one, paragraph, what paragraph is it, the first? Let's make, I mean, if this is what you guys wanna do, make a motion... I, I'll have the OTC guy come and explain this to you, but I'm telling you... No, let's approve it. Right. If they wanna prove it with those changes, let's approve it, and then if they wanna come back and say they won't do it, then do that.
So what is that, paragraph four or five?
Let's send it to them the way we want it.
One, two, three, four?
Four.
Four?
Yep.
And then...
So paragraph four, and then the next one?
Section 20-48 under exemptions, I think that should be.
So paragraph four, paragraph eight, and what's the other issue, Joe?
It was, is it section 20-148, the exemptions?
So here's the problem with this, now, I talked to Mr. Francis specifically about this part right here. If we leave that in there, and, let's say you're an oilfield worker, and you're here in Alba for six weeks, and you don't sign a lease, but you live in a hotel paying a weekly rate. At the 30-day mark, the City of Alba stops collecting hotel tax on that person.
I think that's fair. I mean, I, I think, well, I think to some extent, if they're here for a month, I mean...
It's not permanent.
Yeah, well, I mean, it depends, I mean, six, I guess by the weekly rate.
I'm okay with defining permanent resident as with a lease agreement of 30 days or longer, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I agree with that too, yeah, but that, the...
Paragraph 11, I'll just count. I mean, to me, it's whatever we define permanent as.
There's a lot of landlords doing the oil, man, they waste on a 30-day.
Mm-hmm. I, my bigger concern is, is, okay, we might have an oil boom every so often, and someone's in, you know, every 10 years, and we make a change in here to affect for those 10-year periods that's going to impact, potentially impact, I mean...
Well, we're either gonna, we're either gonna table this now, or we're going to vote on it with changes. What do you guys wanna do?
So what constitutes a full-time resident?
Hey, what do you?
My definition would be, my definition would be, and for the purposes of this ordinance, my opinion is, is it a resident who, 30-day mark. If they have a lease agreement at the 30-day mark.
And this was sold, whenever this was voted on, as this will not, I mean, my understanding, it won't affect permanent residents, and so this is, whenever you start, you know, that this is a tourism tax, that it's a tax on people who are coming to our community, not a tax on people who are living here, so if they're, you know, even if they don't have a lease, if they're living here over 30 days, I mean, I think that's...
At that point, you're living, you're not visiting for 30 days.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, I think we...
I disagree.
I disagree too.
On 30 days, I disagree. If you've got a lease, I mean, I can go for that.
Yup. So Tom, I mean, when this was, how, how does this work whenever, what was, it was voted in originally, what is the, where's the line of what we can change on something that was voted in?
It isn't, we can change it.
I would like for someone to make a motion to table this, and we'll bring it back at a future meeting, and let's get this, email Steve, email Steve all your concerns.
Well, I addressed this one the last time, and I think Mr. Parsons did also.
I'll make a motion to table item number 11 to address concerns.
So Steve, address their concerns, and bring it back.
Well, be sure you email me, let me know what they are, because I replied your email and got nothing back from you, because I sent you a response from Mr. Francis at OTC.
And I believe I called you, I'm not gonna argue.
Anyway, that's, that's part of my clarification, I didn't get an answer, so we find out if I clarified it for you or not, so, that was kind of...
Who seconded that?
I have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Mr. Brooks, to table discussion and action on ordinance 2023-011, item 11 on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
We're missing one.
Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion to table item 12.
A motion to table item 12?
All second. Motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Dowling, to table item 12. Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item 13, this'll be fast, should be fast. Discussion and action to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of two City of Alba Street Department, four and a half ton, 1982 Chevy trucks, and authorize the business manager and/or mayor to sign all paperwork to transact the sale.
I'll make a motion to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of two City of Alba Street Department, four and a half, 1982 Chevrolet trucks, to authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all the paperwork to transact the sale.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Winters, to declare the surplus to four and a half ton, 1982 Chevy trucks, and authorize the mayor and business manager to sign everything to transact the sale. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 15, discussion resignation members of the City of Alba Water Department.
I can, I had their signatures on it, but I kinda just wanted to turn this, and I can make these up, three of them, just a quick click. I talked with the department head, sounds like everything's, you know, okay there. I'd just like to say thank you to those people for all the time that they put into making our city a better place. Dex interview that was covered in an email, and future plans are being discussed there, so, I, I mean, do you have to, I think all the, that kinda covers all three of those.
I think they're all three discussion items, so we don't have any action period.
No. No action. Alright, I have to read them. 16 comments and reading and statements from former Water Department employees, none to be read. 17, discussion on City of Alba's air and process, that was all sent out in an email. 18, discussion on future plans for the City of Alba Water Department, that was also sent out in the email. Is there any new business? No. Remarks and inquiries by council members.
I will say, there's a training coming up for open records in ENID. It is October 30th at Autry Tech, it's put on by the Attorney General's Office, it should be a lot of good information, anyone who's available to know should check it out, so.
I will say that the matter of the financing for the swimming pool will be at future date. There were some errors in the bid packet that was posted, and those are corrected, we'll get back to that. Any other remarks? Alright, we adjourn the city council, and return to the utility authority meeting. Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 21st, 2023, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of 128,119.70, and payroll expenses of 61,404.50.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Dr. Lahr, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
There's no new business, we adjourn the utility authority meeting, and open the economic development authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of minutes of regular meeting of August 21st, 2023, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of 42,572.09, and payroll expenses of 23,325.62. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Beer, with a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.